Good evening. We're going to open up our planning board.
Thank you.
Our first public hearing before we open up our regular meetings scheduled for 6:30. It's public hearing for special permit approval. We do that after. We open the hearings first. Public hearing for special permit approval for 1052 Mount Elam Road for the water supply in the Water Supply Protection District. Do I have the applicants here?
Yeah.
You can, yes, you can stand up, but I'm going to open up the hearing and I'll let you be heard, but I was, I'm the vice chair. I was speaking with the chair today who is not here but is quite active and brought to my attention before I reviewed the packet that while this is on for special permit approval because you're in the Water Supply Protection District, the use that you're requesting special permit for is not even allowed in your zoned area. So how it got to this point, I don't know. Because somebody, whether it was in, and I'm not blaming anyone, whether it was in planning or whether it was in building or somewhere, another department here, it specifically states in the zoning ordinance and the table of uses that auto, under rural residential, motor vehicle body shop is not allowed at all. Otherwise, it would say special permit planning board, for example, if you were in commercials, C, or industrial if you were in, or a special permit if you were in industrial. Otherwise, nowhere else in the city of Leominster is a motor vehicle body shop allowed at all. You can't get a variance for it or anything unless it was grandfathered in, but I don't, I don't even see that as a possibility because the ordinance has been in effect for 32 years.
So...
But I'm going to give you an opportunity to be heard because there's people here. It was scheduled for a public hearing. It was advertised as such, and I know you did a lot of work, but I'm just telling you, it's clearly prohibited, but I will give you an opportunity to be heard on it. So if you could state your name and...
My name is Dr. Nani.
And you, you live at 1052 Mount Elam Road?
Yes, I purchased the property a little over two years ago.
Okay. So can you tell us a little bit about what you wanted to do there and the history behind it?
Yeah, you want to know how, I want to tell you how I think I got here too?
Sure.
So I believe that the building inspector Peter identified a pre-existing nonconforming use and the application states it, and that's how I believe I got here. And it also said that I need to go into the planning board for special permits to operate the watershed protection area.
Well, that's correct. If it were allowed in your particular area, that's the, that's the issue. So for example, if you were commercially, if you were in an area where it was, where you were zoned commercial and you wanted to put a motor vehicle body shop and also within that area, it was within the watershed protection, you would need to apply for two special permits. What you're, before us with is one special permit for, for a use in a watershed protection area, but you're, the use that you want to continue or to use is not even allowed at all by right or by special permit in your area, in the zone. So that's, that's what the issue is. So I mean, and I'm looking at the, I'm just surprised it got to this point, sir, and I, you know, I'm sorry to be the one to tell you this, but the issue I have is the building, the rejection notice from the building inspector which...
There's one of that, hold on.
Thank you, sir.
That's right.
Thank you. I should have had it in front of me. It says violation of City of Leominster zoning ordinance 22, Article 6, Section 22-35. The applicant wishes to change the use of the building in the watershed protection district from a contractor's yard to, this is, oh, to a warehouse.
Oh, that's, that's a shooter.
Yeah, this is different.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Here it is. Well, I, I mean, his rejection notice isn't even correct. I don't...
I have it. Do you need it?
Yes, please. Oh, here it is. "The applicant wishes to add auto body repair to its pre-existing non-conforming auto repair shop use. This property is in the watershed protection district and a special permit is required." But I, so... The issue is that it's not even a pre-existing non, do you have a, did the prior owner have a special permit?
He told me at any time he was given by a building inspector, who is no longer employed by the city. He was given permits to operate his construction company down here for a number of years. In doing so, he ran this construction yard there with his heavy equipment and stuff, as well as servicing his automobiles and servicing his heavy equipment.
Do you have copies of those?
He wasn't able to demonstrate. He moved to Florida, but he did, he did write a letter of test into it as well as...
Well, I mean, they would be on record here. They would be on record here.
There was a lot of stuff missing from the file.
Well, the only thing I see is a building permit to renovate an existing building is the only thing I see. I don't see any, at least nothing that's presented to me. I don't see any special permits. I don't see, I don't see even anything allowing for the, the use of a, of a construction operation either.
I provided a lot of listings as far as the company being in business as well as workers comp registered with the town, as well as other things registered to that address and in Eco Construction.
I, I understand that. If he, if he obtained all of those, but it starts with, I mean, the first thing I need to see or the board needs to see is that there was a prior special permit for him to operate these businesses there, and it doesn't sound, and also, you know, but I, but again, I'm still stuck with the fact that you're in, your residence and your proposed place of business is listed under, is zoned rural residence, and this is not allowed in that area. So I don't know how he'd obtain a special permit to begin with.
It was also listed on the report, my purchase is mixed use, and it's listed as commercial on a few different things as well, for different years. I'm wondering why the town was listing it as, with taxes for commercial if it's not commercial. That's, this is where this is all coming from. I have LoopNet listings as well, where it's clearly advertised as a commercial property.
Can I, can I see that?
Oh, they're all in there. Yeah, I'm sorry.
So, this is a real estate listing right there. This is the construction. All right, well, this, the city has nothing to do with the real estate.
No, I understand. I'm just trying, I'm just trying, you know.
That's how the owner or his real estate agent listed it. I mean, I understand he has all these license, these contractor licenses and he has insurance, but I mean, frankly, it seems as if he was operating a business unlawfully.
I'm still understanding how it could be done if there was a lot different permits and other things. Knowing that the business was there, he was also coming down here pulling firmist stories, doing houses and other construction work. So obviously, somebody must have known what was going on.
Well, I, but I guess, whether somebody knew what was going on or not, I mean, within the city of Leominster, he was operating something, for their, for the city's purposes, he was operating a business there that shouldn't have been operated there. And, and, you know, that's, unfortunately, that's the way I see it. I'm, I'm going to give you, is there anything else you wanted to add? You've been there for, let me ask you this, sir. You've been there for two years since November of 2016?
Yes.
And so have you been operating an auto body shop there?
I have, I have my auto body shop in Hudson. I have worked on my own vehicles in my garage. I will not deny it, but I have now been running my business out of there. And I've been, I plan to move forward with this sooner, but my lawyer took his sweet time of getting to things and...
Well, I don't think, your lawyer probably has something, you know, the fact is it was, it's not even allowed in this. So how did you know to get to this point? Like, how, what did you do when you said, okay, I'm, I want to run a auto body shop here now?
Well, we started out with going in front of the zoning board for a special zoning permit, and they told me that the ordinance, there's not an ordinance in place for that. So then permits told me to do my homework and figure out if there's a different approach to taking, taking that. And in doing so, I went down and spoke to somebody in the planning board, and I explained my situation and showed them my, the permit that I have for the commercial plumbing and the gas drop needing to be put in place, because obviously, they're doing some new work on vehicles or some sort of hazardous materials up there because of why else would they do that? On paper, it's considered a barn, but if you look at it, it's clearly not a barn. So, and speaking to Mr. Sein, she explained to me, and the building inspector came down, we identified it and acknowledged the fact that it was pre-existing non-conforming use. And then from there, I was told this is the way to go from the planning board, because if it's a pre-existing non-conforming, does that make any difference?
Well, but that would have to be, well, how long has it been? So that's, to me, it's similar to saying it was grandfathered in, but the zoning ordinance has been in effect for more than three years.
It's, maybe with construction, I'm not sure how many, how many years it was in business, but it was in business for at least 20 plus, if not longer. And there's listings that clearly stayed on there that say it was a single, single location business located at 1052 Mount Elam Road. There's a bunch of different online listings I found as well for that.
So a warehouse, right?
It was, there's so many different, it says warehouses, it says bottle opportunities.
I saw a warehouse, yes.
But there's also like, there's also like listings on one of those packets that actually shows listings for...
I saw that, yeah, yeah.
On the internet as well, for the services.
I see terms that are being used that I think were...
No, it's his listing.
Craftily put into the way that they worded it, like mixed use, not in a specific zoning sense, but more like we have a big nice garage here.
It states in one of them that the owner had used it for a family home and had to run his business for a number of years in one of those as well. And I found it on LoopNet. That's a commercial, it's a commercial website.
Yeah, yeah, that's because the real...
Yes, I know. I'm figuring it out now.
No, no, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that's where, that's where, that's where my, my hardships come into play in this whole situation.
So I'm going to also read into the record a letter, this is also what I was thinking of when I was looking for the building. It's called a car park yard and a warehouse.
Yeah, it's been called a bunch of different things. In fact, a matter of it's been identified. There's actually a permit in there at the very back of it from a previous applicant before I purchased the property who was looking to do a similar thing. Obviously, other people as well, as well as I did, were kind of misled and thought it's something what it wasn't. And you could clearly see when I bid by the property that there was a business being ran out of there.
Yeah, no, I don't doubt that at all.
Yeah.
So... Which it should have been, but yeah, I don't doubt that. It's sensitive area.
Yes, no, understandably. And I talked to Chris Canus, the Board Health Inspector, about the measures I plan on taking if approved as far as filtration, all sorts of other things which are in some of these other folders over here as well. Everything that's contained inside the building, anything that would be done inside a curtain wall assembly with a dust filtration unit, anything wet setting would be done in a, a cascade setup which would catch any liquids as far as water runoff, whatever, inside of speeded out material which would be cleaned up out of the back, spray booth, you know, the spraying would be done, spray booth. And I don't do that much spraying to begin with. I'm not like a auto body shop that pumps out 50 or 60 cars a week. I probably paint four or five cars per year and I do a couple of small little things in between, but for the most part, it's big restoration and customization.
So I'm going to read also into the record a letter, this was what I was referring to also from the building inspector dated just February 13th, oh, February 13th. Well, this says 2018. Is it supposed to be 2019?
2019.
"This office has received several complaints regarding a special permit application for motor vehicle body shop to be located at the above references, above referenced address. It was brought to the attention of this office that the applicant is claiming this is an expansion of a current commercial use of the property. Upon review of the property file, there is no mention of any commercial property, commercial motor vehicle business at this location. Additionally, the city clerk's office has no commercial licenses on file for the site. If the building was run there, it was done so illegally. The current owner has held possession of the property," he puts October 11, 2016. You've corrected to November 9, 2016. "It has been over two years, which means that even if there had been a commercial use there in the past, the two-year protection clause has expired. The City of Leominster zoning Article 6, Section 22-3532 states that certain uses are prohibited within the watershed protection district. One of the prohibited uses is motor vehicle body shop." And also, it, not only, that's where you would need a special permit. However, it's not even, it's prohibited strictly in rural residential, as I've mentioned. That signs Peter Nile, Building Commissioner.
I verified the dates on that, though it hasn't been used.
Yes, I saw that with the deed and the other document.
It does also state that it may be a pre-existing non-conforming use as well.
Well, I, we have no evidence that it is a pre-existing, I mean, it's a pre-existing non, it's a pre-existing non-conforming unlawful use is what the issue is. I mean, unless, unless something can be presented otherwise, but zoning ordinance has been in effect.
It's so hard for me to believe that, that no one had any knowledge of this business being there, being the fact that two neighbors on the street are very actively involved in everything and anything that was on that road. So I don't know how it would go on for that many years that nobody noticed that there was a construction company running over the building.
Well, I think people probably noticed it was in a, it was there, but no one ever questions his, the permitting process. That's what the, that's what the issue comes down to. I don't, I'm going to, I'm, I'm sorry, Paul.
We checked the office and there's nothing on file?
I scoured the office and we found what Mr. Harnik has presented, which is in your, I believe in your packet, is a permit stating that, it was a plumbing permit. Is that, that's all that we found.
We found nothing from the planning board itself, but any type of special permit that existed.
We haven't found that. I looked through the registry of deeds because it is accurate that we are missing some documents from our department, but the registry isn't. And I didn't find a special permit.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the board have any questions or comments? I'm going to open up to the audience, sir, in a minute. Anyone else? Do I have any? Yes, sir.
I was just, I was just trying to make sense of how it was considered a mixed use, commercial.
Well, I think, I think the owner or his agent called it a mixed use, but it's not a mixed use.
No, I'm saying those are assessed by the town. This is assessed by the town.
Can I see that?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. This is from, this is a different year, but the use has changed. It went from being mixed use residential and commercial, primarily residential.
Well, who is this from? This isn't from the city.
No, the assessing, I did do it over...
Oh, oh, it is. Oh, I see. It's an email from, okay.
I inquired as to what the assessing standard was for the property and I did a report on that.
It also states mixed use on the, on the real estate listing.
All right, well, I'm not, I'm, I know what this is. I'm going to open up to the audience.
Yeah, Mark Verdanza, Ward Force City Councilor. The application really, I think you summed it up pretty well. It's a nullity. So what you have here is some specious suggestion that there's a, there was an auto body repair shop there. There's no suggestion evidentiary to ever suggest that that happened there. Assuming it did, worst case scenario for the butters, he would be in the wrong place. He'd be before the zoning board of appeals attempting to demonstrate that the proposed use, a auto body repair shop as opposed to an auto repair shop, would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. That, I would suggest, is going to be a very difficult finding to make, given the nature of chemicals and paints and things that are used, especially in the water protection supply district. But I don't think you get that far. It's kind of interesting that there was originally an application to the zoning board of appeals. Apparently, it was withdrawn. They never reached the issue. I don't think there's any, I think I agree with what the building inspector ultimately defined, too late, I think, but that there was no auto business being done there, period. So, so you've got a lot of problems. First of all, you really don't have any evidence that there was prior non-conforming use. Even if you reach that particular, or reach that particular conclusion, you don't, you're not, you're not in a position jurisdictionally to rule that an auto design use is something you can even deal with.
Exactly.
And then apart from that, you have the water protection supply district regulations that would prohibit both of the uses. And as you, Madam Chairman, suggested, you know, this 30-plus years of ordinances on the books that would prohibit either one of those businesses. So I think this just fails for a variety of reasons. I think really, unfortunately, I don't know if this poor young head was led down the wrong path by brokers or what have you, but there's just no evidence to suggest any of these things that should pertain with this particular property and ask you to just deny the application.
Yes, of course.
In regards to the saying it was a prior auto body use, I never once stated that. I stated that it was a construction company and they used legal, I should service their equipment and their, and the heavy equipment is still in the garage. And then those words have actually got twisted around a few different times.
Well, if, if this was a construction company, it'd still be an open source because you would, you would still, if that, that would be a prior non-conforming use. Again, the analysis is, was that ever permitted in that particular zone and was there a special permit ever granted? I think the conclusion is whatever was happening up there was happening unlawfully. And you don't reward that kind of behavior by expanding the use over a period of time to other more noxious potential, potentials as the case may be.
Can I respond to that?
Short question.
In regards to the, you know, the chemicals and stuff like that, in the beginning of the noxious as a construction company would be, I mean, I can kind of argue with that. When you're parking heavy machinery which diesel fuel, hydraulic oils and stuff like that out on the grounds, it's outside, it's to the elements, things that get washed into the environment. And that went on for a number of years, as well as construction debris being stacked outside. I'm putting dust, I'm proposing for dust filtration put in place, I'm proposing for a spray booth, sealed mixing room, secondary containment of any chemicals, explosive contaminants as well, and a sanitation for when I have wet sanding anything for, so no runoff or any contamination to make it outside of my building. Beyond that, there's also a safe tank there to prevent it from getting outside of the building.
And I'm, you know, that's a great argument to make if you even had standing, sir, to apply for a special permit in that area and probably maybe a compelling argument if, if you could go forward on a special permit with a, under the watershed protection. But the issue is that you're not, you know, you're not even, the application shouldn't even come forward because you're not, it's not, it's prohibited in rural residential, an auto body, an auto body shop or auto body repair shop.
Shouldn't it have stopped right then and there when he was, when you, they made him put in the commercial plumbing? Because there's also a permit in there where he applied for regular plumbing and they stopped him and they maybe canceled that and refiled for commercial. So obviously, someone identified the fact that something commercial was going on up there. So how does that just get, I mean, I don't understand.
I don't know. I don't know how, I don't know what happened, sir. I've been on the planning board for 25 years. Nothing has ever come before us in my recollection or in the chair's recollection when I spoke to him today about this. So I can't speak for the employee, the other employees in the city of Leominster who are here every day.
The city of Leominster has invested tens of billions of dollars in a water protection supply district. The reservoir in question represents 60% of our drinking water. It defies logic that we would allow an auto repair or auto body shop in a watershed district. Just absolutely incredible assessment that through some protective equipment, we would allow that to go on. That's just not the case.
In talking to Christopher Canus, I did testing on that pipe tank to make sure it was integrity sound. And I've let Christopher know all the different things, steps and measures I plan on taking. And he personally told me that he did not feel any harm that would be done to that area with all of the safety measures that I was wanting to put into place, especially with it being contained inside of my building, not exposed to any elements outside and contained and controlled. This is the board health inspector himself. And I'm not, I'm not some guy that's just trying to...
He's probably assuming that it was illegal use.
No, he was just going by what I'm telling, what I'm doing to prevent any issues.
Yes, but he doesn't know that it's not allowed there.
Yeah.
Or that they were doing it illegally, but it never took any of all that. But that what you proposed would work.
Yes, that's what Chris is telling me. He has no concern with anything I have to do.
All right. I'm going to open up to the audience. We see, does anyone else have any comments or questions about this petition? Yes, and can you state your name and address, please?
1052, I believe is that we're talking.
Is this the one that was emailed in?
I emailed it in, yeah.
Okay. This is the same one that, you don't have it in front of you because I didn't get to print it, but it's the email.
Okay, my name is Carol Taylor. I live at 1049 Mount Elam Road. I'm a reporter. I live across the street from the applicant. I can't read all of this. Okay.
That's...
Sure, but you might have had a chance to look at it.
Yeah, that's okay. You don't have to read it all, but if you want to summarize your...
I will. I'll try to make some points right. So anyway, I'm vehemently opposed to it for a bunch of reasons, good reasons. The zoning ordinance does not permit that use and the only, according to the zoning ordinance, only the planning board is the permitting agency, and that's only in commercial and industrial areas. I'm sure you know all of that. The road is, this is not in any particular order, but for fire and emergency access, the road is very, very narrow. It's about 11 and a half foot across. It's sloped and the proponent's location is on a blind curve. The road right now and also throughout the winter is very icy, even if there's some power has come, the runoff from all the houses up, mostly you're halfway up the hill or on that slope where all the meltwater goes down, barreling down in the rain, but all year long, it runoff goes down, down Mount Elam Road and into the Menoset Brook where it ends, it goes into the two pre-intake ponds. And people might think the reservoir is way off to the west, but these two ponds are very important because they are right before the intake for the water filtration plant for the drinking water. As far as, and one other thing, Matt's yard is paved, but it slopes onto Mount Elam Road. So any, anything that would be, you know, a rain or any spill would just run right down the road. The fastest emergency response time, and that was recently tested in December or November of last year, you know, two months ago, was 13 minutes. Okay. And there's no fire hydrants up there. Everyone relies on well water. There's no storm drains or anything to catch, you know, oil or any kind of vehicular spills. Oh, we have a residential drinking water wells, very nice quality drinking water. We'd like it to stay that way. But if a fire truck was thinking of using a well, a lot of these wells only get maybe three to 10 gallons per minute. It's a single egress road. It's a dead end road, and that means that there's, if there were any fire, and from doing a lot of reading, and I have an article if anyone wants to read it later, but the, it's not unusual at all for auto body repair shops, because that's a lot of paint and flammables, to have fires, probably more so than a regular straightforward automobile mechanical repair shop. In fact, there's some recently, I remember a hearing in this, here's, here's some here, but you can just see, this is one in Medford, and there was one area where, it was in, took Rockton or someplace where it was on a, a narrow road and it was snowy. We're not often plowed out at a time, but the fire trucks had an incredible time trying to wedge themselves even to get to the site. And it was snowed over, et cetera. It's very similar. So none of us want to be trapped up on that hill because there's only one egress, and if there were a fire, we might very well be, whether it's summer or winter. There's also a vernal pool halfway down the road. There's a vernal pool, and probably you know what vernal pools are. Very important to species diversification and the food chain. It's a very peaceful, peaceful and pastoral place. A lot of bird watchers from various groups come by, and the area lends itself because the city of Leominster spent tens of millions buying up lots of acreage all around. In fact, this site is located in Wrightsmat, surrounded by water protection land. I don't know if you've got a chance to see this, but he would only be about 350 feet up slope from where the intake is, or the ponds right before the intake. But a lot of people enjoy it. And there's always turkeys, like they're regularly in the road. I have some photos, but I didn't bring them up. Turkeys just kind of hanging out on the road, you know, because there's not that much traffic. With a, a site like this kind of industry, there would be more traffic. I've already noticed when he was doing this last February, an increase in delivery trucks and earlier there were cars testing out there. I don't know what they were testing, but they were... I don't know what they were testing, but they were, it's not a quiet kind of industry. It's very noisy. And in the Boston Globe, there was an article about people complaining about noise in a neighborhood where they had had a mixed use approach and that didn't work and they were, you're not having that anymore. The neighbors were driven mad. There's no way to, to kind of control any of this. I mean, you could say, well, it'll be, you know, there'll be certain regs and whatever, but there really aren't. For example, even the assessor cannot go on private property. He can't access property. The city inspectors can't access property. So you're leading up to the applicant and any homeowners who want to risk, you know, bad feelings or maybe arms if I've been injured and threats made against me, not by this gentleman, but other people. So it's not a good idea. There's no way to control where the person puts their waste, you know, there's always going to be waste. I have boats that once oil on fiberglass something, there's always waste, you know, so you have to have somebody who knows how to obey the law consistently.
Is that in your garage?
Excuse me, Chair.
Yes, can you, yes, can you, if you can please finish up, Miss Taylor, I'm going to have an opportunity to respond. I'm going to ask one more time when we go into closing the hearing, so if you can please sum up.
There are no, the permits, there's a lot of permits missing at this site. People have talked about a tight tank. My husband and I have spent probably six trips. There is no permits that can be found for this so-called tight tank. If there is a permit, it is on file where anybody can give it to us, a copy of it anyway. There's no wiring permit and it hasn't been for years. The owner, the previous owner wired his own building, apparently, and that's against the law in Massachusetts, this is state law. And he doesn't have an occupancy permit for that. And I don't think, somebody who skirts the law, like the previous owner, should be rewarded after he has his money maker, if that's what they call that building. They used it for catcher's catch can. It was supposed to be a barn for storage or a barn for personal use and suddenly it ends up with apartments in this mezzanine on this industrial building that's used for a construction site.
You can't have it, you take your finger.
Oh, this isn't, no, this is not that.
Can I see it? Please go through the chair.
No, it is not that. Please don't be misled into thinking that's what it is. And by the way, this is a very complex subject, only have a few minutes to address, our people, because it's, you know, at the Pittsburgh Technology Park, that went through hearings, specialists, mass EPA, et cetera. And there's a lot, you know.
Carol, what did the neighborhood do when Amico's ran it?
What did he do?
No, what did the neighborhood do?
What did the neighborhood do?
Yeah, yeah.
You have a very, there's a certain culture to a place, okay? For example, an auto body shop has a certain culture.
I'm certain they were canceled.
Okay? There's people up there that, I moved in and we moved in there around 1985, 86. The building, the building inspector at the time, I think it was Bergeron, he laughed at me when I complained, okay? Other people, there are people up there who don't care. And if you look at their yard, some of them have automobiles buried in back of their yard, you might understand there's a certain culture, which I didn't grasp when I moved there. And some of the people, one guy was up, he's dead now, a couple of the people are dead. One guy didn't mind, I mean, his yard was a very old pigpen, and he said to me, you're gonna, you better be careful, you're gonna get hurt. I mean, I was threatened, I was threatened on behalf of the Amicos. They might not have put the guy up to there, but the previous environmental inspector said to me, I've heard rumors that that party that owned it before are gonna hurt you. And I said, what, spray paint and stuff? He has no worse. I've had other people, anyway, various city people, and lo and behold, after I had complained about a plastic company truck being there, it's probably just coincidental, but I was blindsided and assaulted and badly hurt. So what do people do, what do people do in a really nasty neighborhood when they're intimidated? What do you think they do? You can read it up in the Boston Globe, okay? So I'm not going to get into that right now.
No, no, I was just curious.
Mrs. Taylor, I think you've, I think you've made your point. I'd really like to move on and we have other things on the agenda. I'm going to give, I'm going to give the applicant an opportunity to respond, but at this point, I mean, I'm doing it because we have a process here, it was advertised, I want everyone to have an opportunity to be heard, but, you know, unfortunately, this is, as Mr. Baddanza stated, this is really kind of annuity, but I want you to have an opportunity to respond.
Okay, one thing I want to say, there was never, there's this myth that this, the magical mezzanine permit that he just showed me, that is not a, yeah, I'm sorry, please, Matt, we can cut it out.
Ms. Taylor, if you could please wrap it up, we get your point, but if you wanted to make one more point, because I do have other things on the agenda.
Okay, there was never a legal pre-existing use that went through the right permitting process with public hearings, special permit, they never did. The previous owner just kind of, with the city's blessing, I guess, went and did what he wanted to do. I really have a lot more to say.
Well, I think we have the point, and I know you came in midway through the, of this hearing and we covered a lot of that. Does anyone else have any comments about this application? Yes, and then we'll give the applicant an opportunity to respond. Your name and your address, please.
My name is Deborah Nutting and I'm at 1077 Malleum Road. And I have been there a long time, '67. Mr. Amico did have a building that was there when he bought the property from previous, 1926, when the reservoir was swapped with the city of Pittsburgh. That was, they were what we would call Finnish people, it was a farm. They had a barn. Mr. Amico, when he bought it, the barn ended up burning down. Luckily, the animals that he had, those goats, didn't happen to be in the barn. And his tractor just didn't happen to be in the barn. But it was supposed to replace that building, what he told us in the neighborhood, said he was gonna rebuild another. When it was Easter morning when it burned down, I even remember the day, because I went over and served coffee to the fire department. They couldn't contain it. It burnt down and it was a wood building. Now we're talking about a block building that Mr. Amico decided to put up that was supposed to be a barn. And now I'm seeing, and Mr. Heinecke is not telling everything, because you had cars going up and down the street last year that were very, you called them high-end cars. What was a Testarossa, a Ferrari, a Lamborghini going up and down and testing their engines in front of my house going up the dead end. And there's somebody that was living in the apartment that Mr. Amico had that was a family member. So now all of a sudden, when you've taken over this building, I can see what you're doing at night when I go out with my dogs. Somebody is dwelling in that what's supposed to have been a mezzanine office.
The office, you mean?
Yeah.
Please, please refer everything through the planning board.
So my, my own perceiving of what went on, a lot of us have seen Mr. Amico do things up there that were illegal. I even confronted Mr. Knut about what he's talking about, a sealed tank. Mr. Knut, I said, you're supposed to notify a butters when you're having a hearing for a permit for something. I was not notified, nobody else on the street was. So where is this tank? Where is the permit for it? And I said, tell me one more thing, because I work for the trustees of reservations. We had a sealed tank, it had to be pumped. When the alarm went off in my office, it had to be pumped. So where's the regulations? Where, when is this being done? How is it being done? None of this, none of this has been right. And this poor man, I'm gonna say it to him, however the realtors represented it, Mr. Amico came to me and wanted to know how I was managing to sell my father's building that was shared driveway with me, because we own three buildings on one property and I own a lot of property behind. We sold our property to the city to protect the water. So when, you know, we see all these things that are going on and we know what's not right. Mr. Amico came to me and said, how did you manage to sell your father's building? I said, I brought a surveyor, I had the driveway surveyed, I had a deed put in, shared deed, which is now no longer allowed any longer, but I'm grandfather, thank you. And Mr. Amico had tried to sell that building for four years and he couldn't because they had listed it many times, different realtors, "Gotta see garage." I'm sorry, he was misrepresented, but he didn't come into the building department like other people that came and talked to me that had tried to buy Mr. Amico's. One was a cleaning woman, another man was a contractor. When they found out, the building department said, not allowable. And the building man, Mr. Knights, said to me that he had not come in to check out the usage. Now, I don't know, I'm not gonna argue with somebody, but that's what I was informed. If he would have, he would have been told and he would not probably have invested the money that he did to buy this, thinking he could do what he could do up there.
Thank you. I'm going, I know you didn't have an opportunity to respond, but we might as well get all the comments in first, sir. Mr. Dembrowski, do you have a comment?
Yeah, just quickly, I'm not gonna repeat anything. I just want to remind the board that No Town Reservoir, I mean, it serves probably 60% of the city and it's a very vulnerable resource. It's a very shallow reservoir. And because it's so shallow, you have sunlight hitting it, you have more organic growth and you've got to treat it with more chlorine. And the result of that is, you know, we've had issues that have come up, excess tetroal methanes, there's another issue that we're grappling now with. What I'm saying is it's a vulnerable resource. You've got Route 2 there, you've got a lot of runoff on Route 2, and it's just something that I think the city needs to be vigilant about. I just want to put my two cents in on that.
Thank you, Attorney Dembrowski. Does anyone else have a, yes?
My name is Sushal Fuzza from the City Council of Atlanta, so I'll be really brief. My two cents is that I think it's a really straightforward proposition. Zoning ordinance is very, very clear. There is no special permit opportunity in rural residential. And then furthermore, that kind of use is very explicitly and specifically excluded in the watershed protection district. So that for me is, that cuts right to the chase.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Ms. Pita.
Regardless of what has been advertised in the past with realtors, I just looked it up as we were talking, there's a number of different descriptions over the years, from water bottling facility to garage, the construction. Regardless of what goes or advertised, if you didn't do due diligence, I guess shame on you, but the question still remains that two years. So even if it was an allowable use, you wouldn't be able to do it because it's beyond the two-year timeframe.
So, thank you. Now I'm going to give you an opportunity to respond and then I think the board may be closing the meeting after that unless something else comes up. What's your comment about it hasn't been two years?
They haven't made, I have the proof right there in the floor.
Well, but you purchased the property in November of 2016.
And I filed for the special permit through the zoning board in September 28th, which they rolled over into the planning board.
You applied in September? I think, I think, I think it has to be, I think if it was going to expire, you had to have, you had to have come with us, come, come to us or, well, the thing is that, there's no special permit to begin with. But had you had a special permit, you would have had to have come to us within two years of, before its expiration to ask that it be extended. I think just because you applied for it within that timeframe, I don't think is enough, but that's really kind of a moot point because there's no special permit to begin with. Did you want to respond to anything that, that one of your neighbors said?
I want to respond to everything, if you don't mind. I'll try to do as quick as possible.
If you could, please, because.
In regards to the concern about fire or anything like that, I'll say it, I'll say it again as I already did, everything will be contained, explosion-proof cabinets and explosion-proof paint mixing room with dry fire suppression, as well as the spray booth dry, dry fire suppression. So the chance of a fire where those chemicals are would be extinguished if there ever was one. And contained inside a block building with a sealed pipe tank as well. As far as the traffic on the road, these things that have been said about Ferraris and Lamborghinis racing up and down the road, if anyone's ever traveled up and down the road, you know that Lamborghini or Ferrari cannot race up and down that road. It's curved, it's bumpy, it's not something that would someone drive up and down the road fast. Would one of my customers potentially come by and talk to you or a friend and leave with their vehicle? Possibly. But going up and down the road past Mr. Nutting's house? Absolutely not, there'd be no reason for me to go down that way. But beyond that, the type of work I do is customization and restoration. Most of the vehicles I even work on, they get brought in by a transport service and they stay for a very long time and then they leave. There's not a lot of foot traffic on my family location. There's not a lot of in and out. It's long-term projects. So a lot of the things being said don't really apply to what they think they're, they're saying they apply to. As far as the runoff from my building, in my, my site plan, you can also see that I put, paved the side of the building, put up a fence to not inconvenience my neighbors with anything site, unsightly, if a vehicle would be parked out there, dumpster, whatever it may be. And also put in for a water garden for runoff from that, from that parking lot, which would stop any runoff that could potentially run down the hill. But I honestly would not even want to put anything outside, I want to keep everything inside where previously things were being left outside. And then I think in the, some of the zoning ordinance, it says that a special use permit or whatever can be granted, only one vehicle or one vehicle heavy permit or whatever can be outside. I'm not looking to do any of that. You know, I'm putting, I'm taking all the measures and all the steps to make sure things are done correctly and there would be no, no issues. So that, I just want to say that. As far, as far as the weather on the road, I don't think that has anything to do with, I mean, anything. If I do five or six cars per year, I have more guests coming to my house than, than customers coming to my house, you know? So I think some people, they have the right to be, you know, nervous and uncomfortable, but I think they're looking too far into certain things and not giving a chance to speak and hear what I have to say before they go jumping conclusions. And that's pretty much, I mean, what it all boiled down to. I can't remember everything that you just said, but a lot of the facts that they just don't apply in ways that they're trying to apply to. And then, you know, there's, there's all these worries about chemicals and this and the other, and I understand that, I get that 100%, but there's also a junkyard right across the street from, from the reservoir. There's also cars driving down the highway. There's also a road that's getting salted every, every day and running down into the reservoir. I'm not saying that's okay, but people aren't focused on these facts, they're just focused on me trying to, I mean, it's very small in the scale of everything else that's being done.
Thank you.
Let me, one, very, very quickly, Mrs. Taylor, very quickly. What he wanted to do is not, you know, in the ZBA hearing, his lawyer kind of conflated two different things. It could just be like a hobby on weekends, then next round. It would be that he would actually relocate his facility at Hudson Custom Creations, which does more than five or six cars a week, it's a pull-down operation, and expand it, which is why he wanted to move here. So they sent it to ZBA.
Okay, thank you. One quick response and then I'm, with someone on the board maybe closing the hearing.
Okay, in regards to, he did not say it would be, it would be like a small thing on the weekends. He said, in comparison to being a hobbyist, it would be on the scale of being a hobbyist, which is permitted by EPA rule 6A or 6H, that a hobbyist can do their hobbies from home and paint X amount of cars, which isn't regulated, which no one controls and they're, they're not, don't have the proper equipment in place. And that's what he was referring to, she must have misunderstood. I do not.
That's okay, I don't need to see it, we don't need to see it.
I was doing a large flow of work with different vehicles in the house, I'm not sure where she's gonna factor them, maybe she's got my books and I don't, I don't know, but that's pretty much where I'm going with that.
Motion made in second to close the hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're going to move on to the next item on our, and we'll get, we're gonna get to this, sir, later in our agenda.
We're gonna come back to it.
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're going to open up our 6:45 public hearing for special permit approval at 29 Middle Street.
If you didn't get up, Chair, I was in the board. For the record, my name is Brian Malisi, with the Dingle Associates, here representing Jake Todd, who's actually with me. We are here asking you for a special permit for an auto body detailing and auto body shop at 29 Middle Street. If I may, Chairman, pass up one of these to the members. This request does not have any new buildings, it does not have any new parking, it's an existing facility, again, at 29 Middle Street. What we have here is just a couple of pictures from Google, a couple of pictures from Google. If you want to look at the first picture, there's an overhead door. That's the spot that Jake is gonna, he's gonna rent in order to do his auto body shop. Second picture is just a, it's a same type of a picture, a couple of years ago, I'm not exactly sure when this picture was taken, but when there was a automotive builder there, they kind of used this spot already to service vehicles. Yeah. And then the third one is just a, is our site plan, it shows the existing building, there's a couple of addresses there, but it shows Haxton, the area where that overhead door actually is.
What's it zones, Brian?
Fortunately, in the commercial joint district, which is 2217, which is the table uses, it's an allowed use by special permit.
Building next to that.
Yeah, and so a couple of years ago, they put the storage facility up, so to the northern part of the property, there's actually a couple of existing storage buildings. And then there's a couple of smaller uses inside the existing building. Most of the, if you worked throughout there today, there was a fence line and there's some parking for the rear of the building that's cordoned off, it's fenced off.
And they get the railroad tracks.
Exactly, and they get the railroad tracks.
And that side is almost all.
Mostly all commercial, all business, correct. The other side of the street, there are also residential, but multifamily, correct.
I'm just looking for my department head comment.
We actually have a couple of years' roll if you need.
Do you have mine? I have them. Thanks, Paul.
Oh, thanks.
Oh, thanks. The Board of Health states that their concern, their concerns are for any impacts this business may have on nearby residential properties, car noise, parking, and noise impacts could become nuisances. DPW approves building states that they were told it was going to be a motor vehicle body shop and not a detailing business. Maybe you can talk about that as well. Conservation approves, fire department approves, police approves, wire inspector approves. Planning is now before us, and I know the director had her input, and I believe that the applicant has responded as well. So can you speak of health concerns and the building about the detailing business?
Jake, if I do start to say anything wrong, jump ahead, hit me, but when we first started to approach the building inspector in order to get the special permit, it's going to be impressive that the majority of Jake's business is a detailing business. He takes after-sale vehicles and puts amenities on them, spoilers, rims, things, things of that nature.
Any aftermarket accessories?
Aftermarket accessories.
Interior, exterior parts.
So you're not, not collision?
There is occasional collision work, but it's not my main, you know, I'm not acting on auto body cars, that kind of thing.
So then, we did not want to say that he does not do auto body work, as he does every other day.
Yeah, it's just make sure it's covered.
So when we did the filing and went back to that, I think that's where Peter was a little bit confused. However, they're both are allowed in that commercial district with a special permit.
What would you, is car, is detailing separately listed, or is it defined under?
It's not defined.
Motor vehicle body shop, because it's, well, detailing is like detailing.
Correct. Detail is like buff and wax.
Yeah.
But like, it's kind of like a...
As far as the Board of Health concerns...
Unless you call it a car wash, which it still needs a special permit.
It was certainly not a car.
No, we're not.
Well, I don't, I don't know what else it would fall under.
Well, the other use that was there is a lot more intrusive than that.
It was a lot more of sales, they did have some sales there, they did do some servicing.
Yeah.
As far as the Board of Health concerned goes, Jake has a lot of the amenities that you just heard about, the dust collection, noise collection. He does have the overhead door. The overhead door would be closed when he's doing all the work. As far as any extra vehicles, again, the vehicles would be parked out back when they're not being worked on, when they are being worked on, they'll be pulled into the overhead garage door, the door will be shut.
Adequate parking in the back?
Here is adequate parking.
And is it a budding residential?
No, it goes out back, it's a big, it goes all the way down to Hannover, but it's mainly like Earth Solutions.
Yeah, you're on the side.
It's like Earth Solutions is right there, and then Hannover is right there.
Is there another detailing across the street?
Yeah, there is.
You know, I know, and there's a garage down, and there's landscaping companies there, and what have you. They're a lot more intrusive than this with these, that's for sure.
And again, it's going to be one garage, one overhead garage door, forgetting Montesquik, for example, it's not a very...
I'm going to, does anyone else on the board have any questions? I'm going to open up to the audience. Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments about this application on 29 Middle Street?
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Any other comments from the applicant?
I believe not, no. I think we're, that's it. Any more questions from the board, which I'll be answering.
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Motion made in second to close the hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Sure, thank you, Brian. Going to open up our 7 o'clock public hearing for definitive subdivision approval for Willard Street along the northerly side of Willard, including 671 Willard Street.
For the record, Chris Anso, here. On behalf of Crown Eagle LLC for the construction of a residential subdivision off of Willard Street. Just to point out, here we have Willard Street located on the bottom of the page with Crabtree Lane extending further off. Lake Tor Drive is to the north, and Lake Samosette would be further off the page. Currently, the property is relatively undeveloped. There is a single family home located at 671 parcel right here. That block is primarily containing a single family home, associated drives and whatnot associated with the single family home. The remaining portion of the property is primarily woodland, with mixed areas of brush. There are several areas subject to the Waters Protection Act located throughout the property. As such, we will be filing with the Conservation Commission for our notice of intent postwork. Those areas are primarily consisting of agitated wetlands located along the northern flims of the project. There's a couple certified vernal pools, and there's some graphical locations of floodplain, which I can go into in a moment. As part of the co-postdevelopment, constructing a single access point along Willard Street, which will be structured to a full width roadway of 34 feet up to an intersection of a secondary roadway. This primary roadway will actually meet throughout the limits of the project and on the southern portion of the property with a cul-de-sac end. This roadway will be approximately 1,530 feet long. To span between the two, there'll be a secondary roadway constructed that will provide the, essentially internal loop system from the subdivision. This will result in a cul-de-sac dead end of less than 500 feet required. It's about 267 feet.
But, you know, so what I still have some problems is that cul-de-sac from Willard Street, you could say it goes from Willard Street all the way around the other loop to the cul-de-sac.
Yep, and during the preliminary planning phase of everything, we discussed providing a secondary emergency access point, which will be located pretty much right where 671 House is located currently. That will allow for emergency vehicles to access the site if, for some disaster were to happen, or an accident or anything like that, that would occur within the first 200 feet of the primary roadway. And to hope with additional traffic flowing in the area, that roadway will be composed to be constructed at the full subdivision with...
But that would be a waiver, wouldn't it? If that's considered the length of the cul-de-sac, that would be a requirement, would it?
We are requesting a waiver for the two points of access to the site. Utilities on the site, water and sewer will be provided via the existing infrastructure located within Willard Street. There'll be a new water main that'll create a loop throughout the entire system, and it's been reviewed by the DPW for its constructability. Sewer will be handled by a series of low-pressure sewer mains, E1 systems are common vernacular. That force main will be located outside of the right-of-way and within a basement. A homeowners association will be set up prior to construction to, for maintenance purposes for that. Stormwater will be captured via several deep-sung catch basins located throughout the property. Those will direct stormwater to a treatment device to provide the required TSS removal, and ultimately discharge to an underground storage system or detention basin to provide recharge and peak rate medications for still. Besides that, that's the general features of the projects. Any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
What are the questions? Is this any, is this, is, are there any changes to this to the preliminary that was approved?
There's a few changes. Under the original preliminary, there was 30 lots, now there's 27. And there was an additional cul-de-sac end that was located pretty much wherever...
Okay, that's what, that's fine.
Yeah, there used to be two cul-de-sacs, but when you start getting into the fine-tune grading and everything like that, the dwelling lots that were located around that were not ideal. As such, it was decided to pull back some of the cul-de-sac and create a loop. It creates several more, more desirable lots if you go construction-wise. It helps reduce the overall impact of the city. And it also reduces the amount of roadway, too.
Do you have any questions? Any other questions before I open up to the audience? Okay, I'm going to open up to the audience. Does anyone have any questions or comments for this project on Willard Street?
Ed Hindland?
Yes.
The Lake Samosette Property Owners Association?
Yes, please.
We have a whole set of questions that relate to the planning board, but also to the Conservation Commission. And some of those...
It was printed and distributed to you.
Thank you, thank you. So you see the comments that we asked. Those are our concerns. We don't need to go through all of them, but there are some key concerns here. And one of the questions I have for the planning board is if there's information missing or an error on the definitive plan, does it need to be changed before the definitive plan gets approved?
I'm sorry, your question again, sir? I didn't, I missed it.
If there is information and error on the definitive plan, does that need to be changed?
If there's anything of error on the definitive plan? If...
Well, what he's saying, Carol, is the concerns, locations of certified vernal pools, are they all marked on the plan? Are they all on the definitive? You know, the protection of those pools, is that all noted on the plan?
And that'll be addressed with the Conservation Plan. That'll be made with the next...
So every, every, every bullet that the Property Owners Association came up with, you want to make sure, you know, is there detail on the plan, or is there...
I haven't seen one.
Did you, that was my next question, you haven't seen this?
No.
So why don't you take, why don't you take my copy?
I have more copies, yes, yes.
Let's go. Let's go, let's go through them quickly, they're not that many. So the locate, the, if you can answer them now. The locations, the concerns that they have include the location of certified vernal pools that are interlinked with each other and the lake ecosystem.
And just to explain what I'm asking for there is on the mass GIS, they show another vernal pool located to the north of the detention basin. Was that removed, or is that...
We've reviewed it with the Conservation Agent, and we're going to be talking with that with the commission. It doesn't line up with what the graphic information shows. It shows that...
Okay, I was just wondering, what was, why it was removed?
It's going to be reviewed. There's a, so a lot of these certified vernal pools were done back in a time where there was no real set procedure to do it. You can literally go out to anybody's property and say, there's a vernal pool here, here's a vernal pool. So as part of the overall view...
The tell-all booth certified is there?
Okay. But those will be reviewed with the commission during the notice of intent or hearings, and that'll be addressed at that point. So those, we walked the site, Willard Scientists has walked the site, and we feel comfortable with the locations of them now. These are located based on GIS location, too.
Protection of cert, do we cover that one as well, when you just, protection of certified vernal pools as required by the city, state, federal stormwater standards?
Yes.
Has there been a habitat evaluation done of the vernal pools?
Because they're not doing any work that's within the jurisdictional areas of the vernal pools. So vernal pools have an outer limit, and within the Stormwater Protection Acts, you can't perform any work within 100 feet of that, within the wetland itself. So for example, if this, if this was the location of the vernal pool, there's essentially a 100-foot buffer zone that's withheld solely, solely inside the actual wetland area. Anything outside of that wetland area is not jurisdictional to the vernal pool.
I'm sorry, do I need to go through the board? Should we, I don't know how you want me to do it.
Well, I know most of these things are within the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, in my opinion, but maybe we can discuss them very briefly.
Yeah, so that's the direction for the vernal pool protection. Stormwater management meets the critical areas, because this is considered a critical area because of the vernal pools, and stormwater management meets those requirements.
The discharge from the detention basin is more than 100 feet away from the vernal pool?
Yes.
Okay, it doesn't look like it on the map, but...
And again, that'll be reviewed with the commission. Locations of the 100-foot wetland buffers, yes, there is 100-foot wetland buffers.
There's a typo on there. One of your 50-foot wetland buffers is marked as 100-foot wetland buffer.
Okay, we can address that.
I just, no.
It's there, it's a typo, it's not a big deal.
Yeah, but there are houses located within the 100-foot buffer zone, those will also require additional filings with the commission, too. So there'll be several filings with the commission. Right off the bat, we're going to propose to the entire subdivision with its infrastructure requirements. And then once that is completed and they start doing construction on the houses, at that point, the individual houses will go through the rig of role with Conservation Commission, too.
And, okay, we'll go through it, you see, I don't want to go off.
Yeah, let's, keeping in mind...
Keep it, we'll keep it on, we'll stick to the list, and you guys have been here for a long time, so.
All right. So there is operation and maintenance plans included with the stormwater report and located on the site plans themselves.
So the O and M?
The O and M plans are all in there. Operation and maintenance of the actual detention facilities will be accommodated through the homeowners association.
And is there documents included in there as, as far as the homeowner association?
That usually gets set up right prior to construction. And it's going to be a requirement by the DPW that that provided to them for their review prior to construction as well.
As I've read the subdivision regs, it seemed to indicate that that had to be filed for the planning board's approval.
Yeah, and that's usually, again, something that gets done right before construction. It's not something that's provided during this phase, because we don't know what everything's going on.
And there will be a budget for what it's going to cost for the O and M?
Yeah, that'll be all included within the homeowners association.
Because our concern is, is you only got 27 houses up there, and there's a lot of hardware in the ground.
Yep, exactly.
And like Samoset, if that hardware doesn't work, and that, that homeowners association doesn't work, kiss the lake goodbye, because that's what's still happening. And that's what our real concern is, because the lake's on the verge, it's already got to make problems. I won't go into it. And that's our concern in terms of, so you know what our major concern here is, is that that subdivision is part of the lake. It's absolutely part of the lake. And what comes out of that detention basin at the end is going directly into the lake. And the vernal pools and the bathing beaches are considered critical areas under DEP stormwater standards. And there's restrictions that we can do, and one of the restrictions is that detention basins are not an accepted, they're not, they're not approved for use of discharge to critical areas, and that's a big concern. But that's for the Conservation Commission, but that's our concern.
I disagree, but the water being discharged from these sites is very little. Most of it's being captured and recharged via natural recharge. It's all sand and gravel on this site.
It is.
Yes, it's all sand and gravel. Most of these, the smaller storm vents don't even have a discharge experience.
Okay, so you've done the calculations on it.
Absolutely, they're all, they're reviewed by DPW engineers, and they'll be also reviewed by the state during the notice of intent filing.
And does the stormwater detention areas, do they provide any treatment?
Not specifically.
They don't do recharge, they don't do...
They do recharge, but recharge isn't considered a treatment system. Treatment systems are being accommodated through hydrodynamic separators that will remove the silts and sands and all the coarser material. The deep-sung and hoods and set catch basins hold back the larger trash, if you will, that's held within the, whatever's on the road. And the hydrodynamic separators also provide an oil separation mechanism, too. So you're also removing some of the oils that are on the road for typical car use. So these systems are designed to provide the required TSS removal prior to discharge.
So you'll get 80% TSS removal?
Yes.
And the concern here is that with the underground detention areas, the underground detention system, because if they show up, they don't show up as, I'm a little confused on it, because it looks like it's a detention system and not an infiltration system.
Yep, and when you look at the actual stormwater report, and the, also within the site plans, there's also a profile showing how they're depicted. The actual inlet, or the outlet, I should say, is actually higher than the outlet or inlet into the system. So there's actually quite a bit of water that's stored within the system itself that's allowed to be naturally recharged back into the soil.
And will recharge?
Yes.
Because the, I didn't see perforations on the...
Because it's an open bottom. It's a giant arc chamber.
It's an open bottom, yes.
So it wasn't a pedestal.
All right, all right. So, and then the detention basin itself doesn't provide treatment?
Nope, it's just primarily there to accommodate the...
So the water quality units are the primary way of treating the TSS, which comes to the biggest concern there is in terms of the homeowners association and in terms of the long-term viability of those underground systems. My understanding is they're extremely prone to clogging.
Yep, and these, the hydrodynamic separators are located prior to discharge of these. So they're removing all the sediment that's in there. And also, within these systems, there's inspection ports and access points, so they can clean out these structures if sediment is... can clean out these structures if sediment is experienced or found inside the chambers. So, there is.
That's the diligence of the homeowner association.
That's my concern.
And then there's also, under the order conditions, because Lomster has a boilerplate, that stormwater management systems are required to be inspected regularly and reports provided to the commission themselves. So there is a mechanism within the order conditions and the filings that we provide so that if this does become an issue, the city has a tool or means to address it.
Will it be possible to add the Lake Samoset Association onto those reports? Because we would sure like to know whether the homeowner association is doing due diligence.
Sure.
And I can know.
That would be.
And just for the planning board's consideration, we've worked with a lot of public works group, association, I mean, departments, and it's very common, very common, to see in communities everywhere, which is one of the reasons for the EPA MS4 permit, to see catchbasins and other devices that are not being cleaned.
Absolutely.
And that's the big concern here.
Absolutely.
What's going to happen with this? And is there, what is the cost of this? And what is the annual cost to each one of the homeowners? And how do you ensure that the homeowners know what they're doing? Because I can tell you right now that they won't. And who's going to manage that? Because you guys are going to be out of the picture, the owners are going to be out of the picture. Who is going to manage that? Who's going to be the oversight on that? Who's going to provide the control on that? Is it going to be the planning board? Is it going to be the Conservation Commission? Is it going to be the DPW? I believe all that stuff should be ironed out in advance as part of the agreement. Otherwise, we've got a catastrophe going in, the lake. And I think the biggest piece of this whole thing, and my biggest concern is, what's it going to cost? You've got 27 units, and if you're looking at $100,000 a year for maintenance, which it probably isn't, but you can do the math. And the math becomes really important for the period of time while the house is being built, you've only got four or five or six houses that are supposed to be carrying that annual maintenance, O and M cost burden, what's going to happen there? So those are some issues that I think are really important in terms of the viability of this overall plan. Couple of other questions?
I'm sure other people have comments, so, Mr. Himal, if you can be.
Okay. And the other question I have is, was there, did the preliminary planning process include looking at environmentally sensitive and low-impact development options?
That was not part of the actual preliminary review.
And that, all of the city ordinances, including the stormwater and erosion control ordinance, including the subdivision regulations, including the state and the federal requirements for stormwater management, say this must be looked at, and it wasn't looked at. And that's, I could tell by looking at the plan that it wasn't looked at. And that's a real concern, and I think that that stuff needs to be looked at before it gets final approval to see what can be done at this moment in time. There's no reason to go back and do the whole plan over, but there are a lot of things you could do on that plan, from rain gardens to swales to infiltrated catchbasins and so forth and so on, that were not considered. And you're required, you must consider those, you must consider them. And if the planning board doesn't bring it up, we're going to bring it up at the con con, because you have to look at that stuff. It's not a choice, it's not an option.
Any other comments, Mr. Himal?
That's it? Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any other comments or questions about, what's your, yes, yes, Mr. Clonier?
Dave, former Brooklyn City Councilor, you know, like Ed, I have concerns about detention ponds, I've dealt with plenty of them, and there are plenty of them in the city that are abandoned currently. So, what else besides detention ponds is the homeowners association going to be responsible for? Is there anything else?
Besides the detention facilities, they'll be also required to treat or clean out the water quality units to ensure that those are functioning properly. Typically, the DPW will take care of some catchbasins if they change their stance, which would be at that point in time. Beyond the actual stormwater management system, the only other system that the homeowners association will be associated with would be the sewer main, just to make sure that if something were to happen, that it could be accommodated.
So, is the, this subdivision intended to be publicly accepted and accepted street? And how much of a bond are you going to be putting up for this? That's, that's never determined yet. Sorry. You know, I personally think that if, if there's a mechanism, you know, in place, and there's going to be a homeowners association, there has to be a funding source. And I think there needs to be something put in the deeds of these houses, as if you were buying a condo, that is very clear that you owe fees for things that you are responsible for. So, you know, the days of all this, you know, good talk about how everybody's going to, you know, play nice and maintain their basins, we all know that does not happen. There has to be something, there has to be a funding source, and it has to be very clearly stated. What about street lighting? Is there any?
No, no street lighting.
There will be no street lighting. Okay. So that makes it a little simple, a little simpler then, because I found out that only the city can contract the street lighting, so I didn't know if there was any agreement yet on that stuff. Okay, good for now, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Clonier. Anyone else have any comments? Yes, sir.
Pete Lanzer, you want to wait for your drive? I just want to clear up a couple of things. I think I submitted the data for the vernal pools years ago. The data is kept current. I did not certify the vernal pool, okay? The state of Massachusetts certifies them. Under Fish and Wildlife and under the Natural Heritage and Dangerous Species Program, because of what was found there, that was considered a rare species habitat, which, and I know my issues are going to be with conservation, but I didn't wander onto the property and certify a vernal pool. Doesn't happen like that. It takes months, sometimes years. And I want the planning, even though it's not, you know, your big issue, or why you would understand that, that it's very rare in the state, some of the protections that were put on there, and some of the pools nonetheless have disappeared, they've been filled in. So, it's, it's not, and I know what the restrictions are, and I know what the current standards are for vernal pools. And it meets them, it exceeds them. Again, conservation issues, but I thought you might like to know that people don't certify these things, the state certifies them.
Thank you, Mr. Lanzer. Anyone else have any questions, comments? Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is Philip Schrecks, you guys should actually.
Yes, me too.
Would you like to come?
Yes, please.
I'm just going to read very quickly since it's relatively short. Philip Schrecks, I live at 650 Willow Street, it's actually the property right next to your road, and so I'm a direct butter. But the road, very close to my water well, I'm concerned about water, because it includes water and snow runoff. It's 22 feet in my well from Willow Street itself, and the well is very close to my property line. It's actually right at the top, top hand corner where your road would be, on the other side of the electrical. So, I'll be obtaining the production of my, of my well and my water, just to make sure that I'm compliant and there's no damage to my well. If there does happen to be some kind of damage, or if there is water runoff that causes my currently non-flooded basement to flood, I would want to know who is going to be responsible for that. This would obviously be due to the destruction. So that's one question I have and concern I'd like relatively answered. My second concern is the road itself, Willow Street, and if you've been up and down, it's a very, very narrow road. It has curves on it, it was obviously built for tractors and farm, and farm equipment. You're putting in another road with 27 houses, which, if it's two cars per house, that's 54 houses, 54 cars going in. And where that's coming out is going to be a very busy area, especially when the snowplows come. You're going to actually narrow that road to almost a one-lane road, it usually takes them a while to get through there. Even this morning, you know, if we parked there, we literally had to stop to go around. And it's not a very well, large road for, for large equipment. So has there been any kind of traffic study done on that to determine the impact on the local people and the local community that, that already exists? You know, I, and I'm going to reiterate in my last line here, I appreciate that the plan proposes to bring improvements, and when I'm sure of our, going to be very beautiful houses. However, I want the projects to be cognizant of the impact of people that have the homes there and their community, so it wasn't a neighborhood.
Thank you so much, Mr. Schrecks. Let's know if you have any, any response before we move on to the department.
Thanks.
Yeah, of course. Do you have any response to Mr. Schrecks?
Nothing specifically at this point in time. Relative to runoff, just looking at the grays of the land, the house seems to be a little bit higher up than where the bottom of the toe of the slope is for the actual embankment. There will be a shoulder that will be installed, so whatever water physically hits the roadway and within, I believe it's eight feet of the roadway, it gets pitched back into the stormwater system.
Okay, can I respond?
Absolutely.
So my question is, your intentions is what happens if something bad happens?
Yep, and at that point.
Who's responsible for that? And maybe that goes back to the deep that you suggested earlier, that that kind of stuff is included in that.
And the location of the roadway for the proposed roadway allows for specific site distance, so you can see traffic moving, turning, when you're pulling off onto this roadway. But a formal traffic study hasn't been performed, just because it's not a large subdivision, but it is a large subdivision, so it hasn't been formally performed yet.
Why not?
We haven't requested it yet. Probably.
Yes, sir, can you identify yourself?
Yes, I will. My name is Frank Andrews, I live at 67 Willow Street, I own those two lots down the bottom. I am going to be right next to your so-called emergency exit road, or engine road. How far from my line is the road going to be?
Right over there.
Right on.
Yeah.
Looks to me and like. Yeah, well, I, I mean, I can't either. I don't see a road there, proposed, but I don't see one.
So that's going to be approximately, the edge of the roadway will be about 15 feet off the property.
That's not, if that's against the standard, it's supposed to be at least a minimum 20.
I haven't seen that one, but I can look into it.
Building goes around here, 20 feet, from your, on any of.
And it won't be a commonly used access point.
Now that the question I have since on, is there going to be any sidewalks on this, proposed for this main road?
Along Willow Street, no, internally.
No, no, in the, in the dual.
Internally, yes, there will be.
Another thing, on the farm, I've been there since 74, there is a well that was on that farm. It's wide open and exposed, and it hasn't been for the last two years. What's happened to that water that's draining into it today that impacts his well, which is about 75 feet, from the open well that hasn't been covered yet? And when you're putting the emergency road in, it's going to go over another well. What are you proposing to do about capping those wells?
If there's any wells, they'll be abandoned. Usually, it's filled with.
Abandoned.
Abandoned.
What about, what about that watershed and the safety of people who have wells in that area? You got to cap them?
Yep, it'll be, it'll be discontinued. I'm not a, I'm not a well expert.
And I'm bringing it up here, and I want to see them capped, properly capped, so nothing gets down them. Because every house up on that street has wells. We don't use city sewer, city water, and a lot of us don't even have city sewer. They're all septic.
Yep.
So you're also going to be impacting, especially the people who have septic systems on lower ends, like him, you're going to be impacting his leak grid, but the run.
We are not impacting their septic systems by any means. Any private well that's on, not on our property is not being touched, so we're not disturbing any of that.
You're going to impact the watershed.
The watershed is, generally sheds directly off of Willow Street, portions of Willow Street actually drain onto our property unimpeded, typically there's a catch basin and curving and everything like that. Everything that comes off of this property, overland flows towards the rear wetland areas. So there's really no direct runoff coming off of the property onto a buddy properties.
Go all downhill.
It all goes downhill to our current property and then the.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Patrick from Uncle 664 Willow Street, I haven't been able to look at the map, is it okay if I approach you and just take a look? I don't want to make any assumptions. So this, this is Willow Street going like this down in the bottom corner. So, looking at the map, I would be directly across from your planned road. My concern is with those 54.
The planned road? The road itself or the, where's the access?
The main road itself, not the emergency access. I'm directly across from that, and because it slopes down, those 54 cars are going to be shining a light right into my bedroom every single day, multiple times a day potentially. Is there any way that we could relocate that road so that it's not directly pointing at my house? Shift it over to the left, which would also serve the, the other person as well concerned, so I'm not getting that, that white light pollution?
Get rid of the house law.
What's that?
To get rid of the house.
I believe one, what is the directly adjacent lot that's on that plan there? Is that purchased by you guys or?
If I was to propose this there.
Which light you looking for?
So, this is currently Patrick's house here, and this is a lot that you own, this is vacant, which I think you own, and then this is the house that you are taking down as well.
Correct.
So where is, so these two properties here are these two.
Yes, so the houses are okay right here.
And what would be the reason that you wouldn't have this just be a fully paved road, and then you could at least take some of the pressure off of having, having everything come out on that tip?
So, under the ordinance, we're required to be 20 feet away from another intersecting roadway. So we try to push, pull it as far away as possible from that intersection.
And that intersection is right across from Crabtree?
Yes.
Why could we not at least swap them? Is that a possibility?
At that point, it would be a violation of subdivision regulations.
So there's nothing that can be done in regards to that?
We push it as far back as we can so that we can allow for a greater site distance from the actual roadways itself. Relative to the one roadway coming in and out, trying to alleviate the pressure, if you will, from that point. There's a lot of curb cuts on Willow Street, we're trying to minimize that as much as possible, allow sort of safer traffic maneuvering coming off and on to Willow Street by allowing it to be at one spot. We were looking at potentially doing it that same way, providing a second point of access, but again, there's adding more variables into the traffic equation.
If you got rid of that house law altogether.
I was just going to ask that.
That would alleviate this whole problem, wouldn't it?
Well, I think that part of the issue for him is he's worried about his well. This road shines directly into this property, these people are affected as well, and you're trying to get away from this intersection. Is there any way that you could reduce your footprint, alleviate that lot, and move this road so that it at least comes in the middle of the property, so that you're at least not affecting the other property owners that are already currently living there, so.
Would you consider that? I'm not going to hold you to it, but would you consider it? We're not going to close this meeting tonight, at least I'll.
It moves you away from him as an issue, from this property that has an issue, from this property that has an issue, and, you know, there's no house there currently, and at least, at least is moving that road somewhat over to not shine a light in this house every single night.
Because that would be one of the things I would request.
If you're not willing to make a second road to alleviate some of the pressure.
He can't ask questions.
I know.
But, but, it is, it is, it's a great point.
If I may, just for your purposes, that's the house and that's the.
Great, can you just, for the record for minutes, could you just state your name?
Lisa Profit.
This is my sister-in-law.
Okay, thank you.
And then one other question, would you consider, as good neighbor, tying this property if he is questioning it, and then this property into town water, while you are in the process of tying the development in?
Again, I can't physically answer that question.
But you've made this comment last.
Okay. And then one other thing, I work for a DPW in another town, specifically Water and Sewer Department, can you just explain?
No, septic system, septic.
Septic.
Yeah, their septic's of their own.
Okay, they're all, they're all a septic.
Title V does not allow somebody else's septic.
So the homeowner fee was just for the septic owner, not for the septic?
No, there's no septic located on the property. They're all gonna be E1 pressure systems, so low pressure. They'll tie into a common vein. They'll be located along, outside the roadway or the road, and it'll transmit to a new sewer manhole and then provide a direct gravity connection to the existing system.
But did you say there was a fee for that for the homeowner?
Yeah, the homeowners will have that be associated with their home ownership association.
What is that for?
General maintenance of the main. If something happens in the main...
So the cul-de-sac was responsible for the sewer main?
Yes, the subdivision homeowners association.
That's crazy. I don't see it happening, but I know that's... But the biggest thing for 664 Willard could be to move that move so that it's slightly over, but it possibly reducing that block back by one.
Yeah, knock back a lot. You'd be able to do a lot here.
Any other comments?
No, thank you.
Thanks. Any other comments or questions for...
This has gotten better.
Yes, sir.
Hi, Peter Latchis. My grandson, 653. I noticed the road going into the project is the closest, is the furthest away from the land, so you get maximum property value. So this, this plan benefits the project, so I can see that's well intended for you. But you also have a butters in that situation, where she's gonna get light from cars. My grandson has a well close enough by. His question makes sense. I think if everybody lived at that house, the question is if that gets contaminated or he's got overflow and all of a sudden he's got water in his garage, I think that's a good question, and the question was, would the association be responsible, or can you put that in writing? I mean, he's gonna check his well. He's gonna get verification that his water's pristine and the well is fine. If something happens while you're doing construction, then are you responsible?
I would have to take a look if you're looking into that.
You'd have to look?
I have to look into that, see if they will ever see the septic.
I really want you to look into it, because that's, that's a real serious problem. I mean, I can understand you trying to get maximum security out of the project by moving the road the closest to the line, but I think the butters that have been here before this project, that don't mind building this project, would like to see the road moved back to that house where the lines of the road.
Okay, just eliminate one flaw.
If I may?
Yes.
Right in front of his house, right directly across the street from that road, is one humongous big tree. And there is no way a bus and a car can pass each other, one going north and one going south, at the same time. Something's gotta be done.
That's actually the tree I was talking about, that there was a...
Something's gotta be done with that tree, because it's directly across, directly across from the road where it's proposed.
Thank you, sir.
I'm just gonna finish up. I also think, what are the comments up here? I think the comments are this gentleman here, the sir.
Him.
He's very well informed on the ground, and he brought up a good question. Things get said, and all of a sudden, no one's taking care of it. He wants to make sure this gets done, and that's what the Water Commission is doing. And the other thing is, we're definitely like an answer line if we get damaged on that well or that road, and I hope the road gets moved. I think it would solve a lot, the solution of these people, our situation, and, and other, other concerns that he brought up to me. I think it's very little to do for the butters of that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any comments, new comments?
Something should be done with the well that's open right today. That's a good one. Bamelton, please. I'll listen to that. I'm just, I'd just like to...
Any, any new, any new comments? I know it came up, the well cap, but before, any other new comments?
No, I wanna make one comment. It's very important, because his well is very close to that uncapable.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Any other, good comments? I just wanna make sure we're not repeating ourselves. We get it. Any other comments? We're not going to close this meeting today. I'd actually like to set up a site visit. I don't know if we did one during the preliminary phase? Did we do one?
I probably should have given you one, because I've been there longer.
Well, you can be, everybody is invited. So I'd like to do that, but before, before we continue it, I have to have Mr. Anderson go through the department review comments. And just to, it's, it's 10 past eight, we still have the regular meeting to go into. Other than what I, what I propose, we, we have the document in the record, so it's part of the record, but if you can go through the more substantive ones, I know our planning director made very good points, and you added, you added what she, I don't think you disagree with anything, right? In terms of things to add to the, to the plan and you had?
No, just to, we have received Ms. Woods' comments regarding our comments about subdivision. I think we pretty much have everything taken care of. I think there's a couple small, little loose ends. I know the verbiage regarding the floodplain district, as I studied earlier, there is floodplain graphically located on the property. It's located within this area, within the wetland area. We can plot it, it's gra, the property is graphically located inside it, but when you look at the actual firm panel, the flood elevation for the 100-year storm is at 472. Based on the top of graphic information, there is no 472. So the old firm panels were done back in the olden days. Currently, I know FEMA and everybody else in the world right now is re-reviewing the national sub...
What's the elevation now instead of 472?
By 472 and a half. So currently FEMA is going through the process and re-upping the, this area's floodplain. If that does become an issue, then it can be, and it's jurisdictional under CONCOM, the floodplain district regulations in this town. But at this point in time, there is nothing there, so that's why we added the word "may" into it. I believe, gosh, it's surprise, anus of the law is no excuse relative to these rules and regulations, so if that does become an issue, it is under the purview of the homeowner, contractor, anybody who's dealing with this project to review. But at this point in time, there's nothing to look at within the floodplain.
Okay, so the other comments from the other, the Board of Health Development will be serviced by Municipal Water and Sewer. As we've discussed, our concerns are for the increase in traffic on the road that needs repairs and widening in spots. Willard Street has issues, and we've discussed those. The board will consent, will, will have to have a discussion about whether or not there should be a traffic study. We'll do that. And again, we're not closing the meeting tonight. DPW has their list?
They had their list. We received their comment, too. There's only one statement that DPW had relative to the access point for the detention basin in the back. The plans do note, it's small, it's located in a convoluted area. There is a note saying provide gravel access path to provide maintenance. I meant to get ahold of Mark Pomerini over in DPW this morning, but it's snow and everything else happening today, unfortunately wasn't able to do that. But once I sit down with him and say this is where it is, should be some...
And they didn't ask about the capping of the open well?
Nope.
Did you get the DPW comments from February 27th? There's a second set.
Yeah.
In front of you.
A second set?
Yeah.
And they still don't talk about the capping?
Thank you, Elizabeth.
That's right.
Yep.
So if you could add that? Well, if you could discuss that with them?
Yep. Comment number 18 is the gravel access drive, and number 12 and 11 are just acknowledging that the project is subject to a swift...
So just, you know, as a notation on the private review forms, make sure that DPW is into that open well, the open well as well.
Okay. Still the inspector approves.
Fire.
Obviously, we went into quite a discussion on the Conservation Commission. They, do you have that scheduled yet?
We just got, everybody's been on vacation for the last couple weeks, so we finally just got our big signature today, so that should be submitted within the next week.
Okay. Fire would like to see one more hydrant on Road A.
DPW also has similar comment, one which is slightly off of the 600-foot mark, so we got additional hydrant to the plans.
Okay. And then Leamester Police is looking for clarification on the location of the secondary emergency access plane along Willard?
Yep. Under the original plan, it was kind of difficult to read it in that area, again, just grading and everything like that, so the revised plan said we need to make it a little bit bolder and made the notes a little bit better, so, but yes, it's located in the same area.
Okay. No comments from wire, assessor? We went through the planning? Okay. Okay, and I'll, I'll ask one more time. Does anyone have any new questions or comments? Okay. We're going to...
Oh, I just wanted to make sure that, that we're covering all the basics here on the traffic impacts, the, you know, the movement of the...
Road.
The road, maybe eliminating that lot. The Home Association responsibilities, but when it comes to all the concerns for the San Sep Association, so we wanna, you know, we're gonna continue this, and we wanna see, you know, what you guys are gonna come back with in regards to a lot of the things that were raised tonight. And there were other things that were raised as well. This has been a, this has been an ongoing process for a long time. We've seen a lot of things on this, and we're not taking it lightly, and we're not gonna approve something that we have issues with. So go back to your homework and let's see when we come back.
And I, I'll make this comment. I, I think the applicant should consider these comments. I didn't hear one person in here saying, which is the first time in a long time in my 25 years here, that no one has said this should not go in.
Right.
You have a gentleman who's, who's going to get headlights in his, in his bedroom, and he's not saying, "I don't want this, can you move the road?" And along with Mr. Hemlin and, and his association just asking, making concerns, so no one's actually saying, "We don't want this project here."
We just wanted to apply the guarantees.
Or at least not expressing it. So I'd like to schedule a site visit?
Yep.
And then we're going to continue this?
Yeah, March 25th meeting, we have April 8th meeting, where we have to talk about the schedule.
Well, they may have to do some redesign, so we should push this out to April, but we should give the site visit after the sewers meet. It would be better without any snow on it.
Well...
But I don't, you know, March is, we're gonna get a lot of snow this month.
So why don't we...
I mean, it's tentatively scheduled a sidewalk. It's supposed to get warm for its access this weekend. There's gonna be some rain, some snow this week.
Sometime next week, maybe sometime next week.
Sometime next week, yeah. So, but we usually do that here, right? We don't let that go?
Correct.
All right, well, my, my issue is I'm, I'm not going to be around...
So at the following week?
How about the, why don't we do it the week of the 25th? Because then it'll be later in the season.
And we have...
Or earlier in the season, and then it'll, and if we schedule it for the April 8th meeting?
The continuation, right, from April 8th.
Okay.
So the week of the 25th sometime?
I don't know, what, that Friday, the 29th?
I'll listen with the...
Thursday, the 28th?
Yeah.
In the morning?
How early are we going to talk to? 28, 10:00.
I don't know, 8:00 AM?
What was 5:00? Well, it should be better, but I...
You wanna do it in the afternoon?
Yeah, afternoon would be great. Just save the time. I'm retired, I can...
I don't know, 4:00?
4:00 is good. 3:28 site visit at 4:00.
Does that work for you, sir? 4:00 if you're a tour guide?
I'd be happy to be your tour guide. No, every inch of that way.
All right. 3:28 at 4:00 PM. Yes, sir.
It's like San Sep and that.
Of course. Everyone's invited.
Absolutely.
Even if you live in, even if you live in the North Leamester, you're invited.
You specified where to meet, so it's...
Well, how about we meet in front of Mr. Burgwinkle's house?
64. 664 Victory.
What is it, 654?
664.
664. Back and say 666.
Well, we're gonna, well, that will be, we're all gonna park at his, in his driveway. Carpool, carpool if you can.
You can take my truck.
All right.
664.
Thursday, the 28th. Excellent. And we're going to continue this to, can we have an April 8th meeting instead of an April 1st meeting? I know I keep switching the schedule, but...
I won't be here. Okay. Now, can we do it?
We're pulling the book. I'm gonna have to get the book. We have one other item I know on April, the first meeting in April.
We can, I mean, if we keep it light, we can... We have already something scheduled for that day, is what you're saying?
We have one item scheduled, yep.
Need your item?
I believe it, it might be the solar, the application solar.
We didn't schedule that for March 25th?
No, that's March 25th. We have 252 Mill Street, which is the site plan.
Well, what if we, does the applicant mind if we move this to, are we gonna have a second meeting in April? The 15th is a holiday. The 22nd?
Yeah, so that'd give us two weeks, two weeks.
So you don't wanna do the first or second?
Well, if you have something scheduled for the first, let's keep the first on and just have, let's just have it on the 20, the second meeting on the 22nd, if the applicant of this project doesn't mind going to the 22nd.
Prefer to have it this...
On the first?
On the first.
Let's just, let's just schedule it for the first. That's, that's our regular scheduled meeting. Let's do it.
Okay. 6:30?
6:30.
Yep.
So, do you already have something scheduled?
Yeah, so, but it's under the irregular agenda. So this is... Motion main second to continue this, to continue this to April 1st at 6:30? And can I have a motion for a site plan?
Site watch.
Site watch?
So move, motion 3:28 at 4:00 PM. 664 Willard Street.
Motion main second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Okay, thanks everyone for your input.
Thank you.
All right, that's my agenda.
Are we doing Monday, January 24th?
Is she here?
Yeah, she's outside.
Let's open up our, well, let's open up our regular meeting, call order.
Somebody called it where? Patrick Perla? Fred Frederick? Paul Weiser? Stop Turf? Herb The Gruff? John Sisup? Excuse, Thomas Cardigan?
All right. Where's Wendy? Come on, tell her we're up. Wendy, we're gonna move Wendy up. Do I have a motion to move up Wendy under Communications? Yes, all right. Motion main second, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Wendy, you're up. The MVP.
That's us.[1677.13]
That's us, let us who's the MVP. I'll be really brief. The MVP program is the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program, another fine name for a program by the state. So we'll go with MVP. It is a program that addresses climate change, including everything from, you know, how prepared you are for emergencies, flooding, culverts, even outreach to community organizations. So it's a two-step process. The first step is to apply for a planning grant, which would give us, similar to other programs we've done, like some clean streets, it would give us a consultant for probably three to four months to put together, to look at all the ways that we can prepare for climate change. And it, you know, even trees, if we planted a thousand trees, it'll take that into account. We've got a good emergency management facility, we've got good communication, but we don't know what we could be missing. So that'll give us the consultant to compare a plan. And then when we give the plan, we will have a list of priorities, like the others for, like the open space plan and all that. Will give us a list of priorities and we'll be able to apply for grant money to actually implement some of those priorities that they find that we produce. So that could be anything from planting more trees to culvert repair, dam removal, all of that. So it'll give us a good source of funding. So I'm just looking for a recommendation letter from the board. They encourage that we get letters from all boards.
And this is a draft that you have, the Leominster Planning Board endorses the city's efforts to apply for designation through the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs as a Climate Change Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program of municipality. We understand this is a two-step process and that the city will be applying for planning funds first to create our assessment and priority project plan. And then we will work to pursue capital funding through the state for construction of our priority projects.
Make motion recommend approval.
Motion made in second to...
Make a recommendation.
To make a recommendation for approval. And we also approve the draft letter that will authorize our planning director to execute.
Sounds great.
All right, thank you.
Great, thank you. All right. Just, oh, we didn't, I didn't do that. Motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, thanks Fred. Minutes of previous meeting, January 28th.
Make motion to accept them?
Second. Made second to accept the minutes from January 28th, 2019. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. 3.0, 3.1, plans submitted, special permit approval for work within the Flood Plain District for the Pierce Pond Village subdivision. We have to schedule this for a public hearing. April 1st?
Yes.
At 6:45?
Sally, Fred?
Yep.
Motion made in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. 4.0, all business done? 5.0, 5.1, special permit approval for 1052 Manulum Road for the Water Supply Protection District. As we discussed, unfortunately, not only is there, this is for a special permit because they're in a water supply protection district, but it was overlooked that the proposed use is not allowed or actually prohibited in rural residential.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
When you said something about 30-year timeframe, about ordinance being in play or something like that, there is a letter attesting to the fact that...
That's for, yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
... construction been registered and running from that location since 1979.
But that was a construction, but this is, your proposed use is an auto body shop.
But that would still make it a pre-existing non-conforming use for the building, correct?
No, because I don't, I have no evidence before me that that's been in there, that's been in place for, since before 1987. And on top of that, I'm not even certain whether or not that would qualify as a pre-existing non-conforming use if it was before.
It seems like he did a lot of things there and that he never had approved for. And I think that's really bottom line to all of us. He did stuff there that he shouldn't have approved for. And nobody noticed or someone looked the other way.
Well, the thing is that I don't understand is obviously somebody knew he was doing something that had to do with some sort of hazardous chemicals in order to put that tank in place.
Possibly, yeah. I mean, I'm not disputing any of that, but...
Obviously, sometimes the town was acknowledging the fact that there's commercial work being out there who assessed it as commercial property throughout all those years. And I'm sure Ms. Taylor can confirm the fact, she's sure she had probably a lot of things that Salvatore did up there over here, I'm sure she filed files and stuff.
Yeah, I mean, that's the, that's the thing, that's what we, that's exactly right, Paul. We're the Board of Permitted Uses and, and I can't, I don't even have any authority to give you anything, because I don't have anything. It's sort of like, I'm trying to liken it to something, you know? Say you wanted, I'm trying to figure out something. Say you wanted to put a funeral home in there, you can't, we can't give you any license because there's nothing that's allowing me to do that. And I feel bad saying that to you and I feel bad that you put all this work into it. The arguments you've made, if, this is, the arguments that you've made have, would be compelling arguments if we had jurisdiction in this area to issue you a special permit. Say all these same people were here and they were opposed to it, but you actually had standing, you actually had the authority to apply to this board for a special permit and to say everyone here opposed it, but you made all these arguments, we would consider them, but we can't even consider them because we have nothing to issue you. If we, if we turned around right now and said, ah, let's just give them the special permit even though it's not allowed, anyone with standing, Ms. Taylor for example, she'd appeal it and she'd win. Because the land court or the superior court in which she filed her appeal would say, the planning board acted arbitrary and capricious because it's right in the zoning ordinance that an auto body shop is not allowed in rural residential. I can't even, I can't even give you that license. I have no, I have no authority to give you that license.
And how does something get grandfathered in over time, years, how does that work?
It, you know, it's, it's rarely, well, it would have to come in, it would have to be something that was grandfathered in before zoning. And I don't even know if it applies to uses, that's the thing. It applies to lot sizes and...
Shared space.
Shared space, like if you have a, if you have a lot that only has 8,000 square feet and you need 10,000 to build a house on it, but the lot has been in existence since 1950, then it's grandfathered in. I don't even know if something like that can be grandfathered in. Another way, if it's considered a non-conforming, a pre-existing non-conforming use is if you had an auto body shop in... If you were in a certain zone in a certain time that was changed. So for example, say you had an auto body shop and you were in a commercial zone and you had a special permit, then five, 10 years later, the city council reconfigures the zoning in Leominster. And now all of a sudden, you're in Residence B and an auto body shop isn't allowed in Residence B. Well, in that case, you're grandfathered in or you're a pre-existing non-conforming use.
What about commercial use? Does that apply to commercial? Because that would be a commercial...
It would apply to anything, but your issue is you're in rural residential. And, and commercial, your commercial building and your commercial use was never allowed in there and it was not rezoned. If it had, if, to make it more specific to you, if your area was once a commercial area and that was allowed there, then the city council reconfigured the zone lines and now made it rural residential, you would be a pre-existing non-conforming use. But there's no evidence before us that that area was ever commercial.
What about once being allowed? If I could, if I could produce a permit, I could file a permit.
Well, I have no evidence before us, sir, that you were ever, it was ever allowed. I mean...
If I was able to obtain permits or in some way to prove the fact that he was...
If you could show, if you could show it, but I mean, I have, we have our planning director here who went through everything, she went through everything.
There's not much in the file at all, like a lot of the permits I found, where permits that was given to me by the...
And that's because, and so that leads us to believe that there were no permits ever, ever issued.
Issue, he was doing it, yeah, and the registry had them.
Yeah. A permit would be at the registry.
So I still can't, I still can't understand why it was even assessed or commercially at all.
I don't, I can't answer that question.
I mean, there's got to be some sort of explanation for that. I mean, that's misleading, that's misleading, I purchased it.
The realtors were telling you that.
No, 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 only assessors reported, it says commercially too.
The assessors reported it done.
And then, and then on the other...
What year was that?
What year?
From 2000 and what, 14 till 2018?
I printed it out in my report.
So I just, obviously somebody knows this all the time.
Well, I understand, but the issue is that we, we are not, the assessors, we are the planning board. In our jurisdiction, what we have authority over is to determine whether or not people get permits and, and we have no permit to give you.
2009 to 2014, mixed use primarily residential. 2015 to 2018, mixed use primarily commercial.
I suspect the reason the assessor's office did that was to tax the previous owner a certain way because he was using.
Right, but that doesn't mean he's in a commercial.
Please, we're not passing judgment on the merits of the project or the great work you would do and all the steps you'd take.
I can't...
We don't have any authority to do what you're asking. So what you're asking is what's your recourse and who do you go to? Basically, and, and, yeah, it's just, we don't have any authority over it. We're the Board of Permitted Uses and that's all we have authority over. I don't know where we, where we do it.
Well, the only, the only permit we could, we could issue you is because you're in a... Yes, but, but you first need to be allowed to put the use in in that area and you're, and you're not, that's the issue. So it doesn't even get you to the watershed protection.
They also have a list of, from all the other letters, that they didn't come here. Well, actually, I'm not sure if he's still here. I know, just saying, but either way, I have letters from the other six letters on the street who have no issues with it.
I, I understand, but we, I can't...
Again, it's not...
It's like you coming before us, asking us for a liquor license. We're the planning board, we can't give you a liquor license. You're in, you're, you're, you're in, your, your site is in rural residential, you want to put in an auto body shop, it's not allowed in rural residential. I can't, even if I wanted to, I actually kind of do want to, but I can't. Because I, I understand that you, someone represented to you that you could do this.
I bought a property thinking it was one thing and now I'm being told something else.
Right.
And from what I'm seeing though, there's a history behind a business being ran that's clear and present, it's been there. And now I'm being, no one can give me an answer of how it happened, how it passed by, how all these different things, the commercial keep popping up, how it went underneath the radar. But it didn't go underneath the radar because I'm sure she complained multiple times about Mr. Miko. So people took notice in the town. Now here I am, about to get financially crippled because somehow along the lines, something wasn't done correctly and things were allowed to be done. And now I'm the legal paying the price. And I don't understand how, how, how there's no way to get, to, to, to address the situation and figure out a solution.
You're, you're, you know, I, I think your recourse is against the previous owner and his or her agent. That, that's the best I can tell you.
You know, like, I mean, the way I'm looking at it, I can't, I can't use my garage to use it for an office because apparently I get accusations against me about me selling living in there. I can't use my garage to work on cars as a hobby because it's in the watershed protection area. But yes, she just talked, said she, she does fiberglass on her boats in her yard, which she has no problem with, but she has a problem with me working inside of my garage. Like, what am I supposed to do?
Well, you can work in your garage on your own cars.
Well, I've been told that, again, I've been, she's been snapping photos of me making sure that I know.
I don't know, the only issue before us, the only application before us is for you requesting a special permit to run an auto body shop from your location and I have no special permit to give you.
Here's my argument, okay? I understand what you think, okay? So I have the right to work on my own vehicle as a hobbyist in my garage, right? Just, just say it's me.
I don't, I don't know.
That's true, but I'm not, you know...
I mean, everyone, everyone who has a garage in America uses it for something, right?
Right.
So if I'm able to work on, as my hobby, which this is my hobby, if I was able to do that as my hobby...
Not if it's, not if, no, not if you're doing it for someone else or you're moving...
No, 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 you hear me, hear me out though. So let's say, for instance, I was a hobbyist and I worked on three cars per year, on three of my cars per year, right?
We can't give you a legal...
No, I'm not asking you to, I'm just saying, I'm preparing. Well, I'm a person who does restoration, but I want to do three cars per year. I just, it doesn't make sense to me how somebody who's not doing things legitimately can do it and it's okay, but someone who's trying to do things right way and put all the things in place and make sure none of these issues come, comes to the environment and everything else, not a problem.
I understand that, but it's just something we can't do anything about. It doesn't sit here.
Our hands are tied.
I think the best thing you can do, I think it's worth, I think it's worth you speaking to an attorney here in the city of Leominster, who knows the city of Leominster, knows the ordinance, and, and, and speaking to them about what, what you can do with that site for personal reasons or what you can do at that site for profit. And I mean, you're in rural residential, I was looking at it, trying to find something else for you to do. And then you might want to speak to that same attorney about any type of claim you may have against the previous owner. I mean...
In the listing for previous listing non-conforming, it also says that if the use that's being proposed makes less of an impact, was, you know, doesn't hinder the environment anymore.
I understand, but I...
Right, but, but we can't, we don't have...
But this is, this is a pre-existing non-conforming unlawful use. That's the issue. And I, and I'm, I don't know why he, the previous owner got away with it for as long as he did, I don't know. I never even knew that this existed until this plan came here. I've been a resident of Leominster for, I was a resident of Leominster for 40 years. And I'm older than 40, but that's how long I lived here. So I wish, there's nothing we can, I'm sorry, sir.
There's nothing left for hardship for, for individuals to end up in a situation like this?
I imagine it doesn't apply.
No, because not with the law.
I imagine it doesn't apply, yeah, you're going to need a...
I think it'd be, I think it'd be wise for you to speak to an attorney about, because I, you may have some, you may have some claims.
That, you know, you want to use for your own personal use, but not for a business use.
But you'd have some recourse to, that something could be put.
We don't know how he got away with it, what he got away with. We have no idea.
I don't understand how, what's that wrong with anyone?
Do we? Sue, do you have anything to share?
You know, we don't, but we also only anecdotally know what he got away with. I mean, there really isn't any evidence that he operated any kind of business other than storing construction vehicles. So to say or infer that he was running a business at that location.
Yeah, that's true.
It's all, it's all conjecture, it's all anecdotal. So, and I just want to be really clear, the zoning ordinance is very, very clear. It is very specific, particularly in the watershed protection district. But on top of that, which is even the first, unfortunately, you don't meet this hurdle. You know, in rural residential, planning board, which they have said over and over again, they don't have the ability to offer you a special, or to even rule on a special permit because it's just not available for that kind of use in rural residential. It's just not. So I want to be really clear, the zoning ordinance, I believe, is very, very clear.
It is.
There's an N, there's an N next to auto body repair.
The case shouldn't even be here.
I know, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be.
The constructor should have rooted this out. He's wasting a lot of his best time.
I know, I know, and I, that's why it was advertised, I wanted you to have an opportunity to be heard. I didn't want to just not open the public meeting, I felt that I had to do that. And I'm, and, and, and that's, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that's it. I really think you should see...
Because in a lot of places, we would have just said, you know, we're going to open it and close it right away and it would have been over. You wouldn't have got to present any of the stuff you had, nobody would have spoken and we would have just closed it right up because we can't do anything about it, it doesn't sit here. So, you know, you put a lot of time into it, other people put a lot of time into it. But it is pretty clean cut.
What about, what about, are we able to obtain those permits, prove that it was permitted?
It does, it's still, it wouldn't apply to us.
But I don't, they, I know they don't exist because I, it's rural residential, I don't think it's ever been allowed, that any type of commercial use such as this. And the type of business you want to put in is only allowed in two areas, commercial and industrial, and you still need a special permit in both. It's never by right, it's not by right within the city.
There might be some confusion, the, you know, the fact that the assessor taxed it other than just residential is, means nothing.
I know.
I mean, assessors can tax illegal uses.
Yeah.
So if there was something unlawful going on there, in other words, the fact that they at some point in time taxed it as mixed use is meaningless to this process.
Exactly.
As well, and I just want to state for the record that I've been down too many of these swamp holes with people wanting to use personally their property for one activity or another, like an auto body shop. In fact, I've had that precise case. And this is going to end up in court if that happens. Because that's a slippery slope and it's unforceable in terms of determining what the hell's going on there. And that's a problem. I mean, this, like I said, this property goes back to the 20s when the reservoir was first approved through a special act of the legislature. I filed the city solicitor a lawsuit to protect that reservoir. It was the largest WPA project in 1930s, the filtration plant. Ms. Taylor suggested that the impoundment, someone did, the impoundment water that actually flowed directly into our pipes is right down the stream from this. This is a major issue. I mean, this is, the city has spent countless dollars on that filtration plant, updating it. We've got issues now in terms of water quality that are being addressed. This is like absurd to even be discussed.
I know, I know.
I don't understand, you say it couldn't be controlled or managed or monitored because that's absolutely, it could be all the above.
I, we have nothing, we have nothing.
Beyond that, when I first moved in, I actually didn't fill it out because my lawyer told me to wait while we were filing out, filling out this paperwork. But then the assessor's office actually sent me something else, asked me if I was renting out the apartment or if I was running a business from the property. Clearly identified that someone was running a business from that property. Go ahead.
I know, sir, but you're coming before us, it's as if we're a bank and you're looking to renew your license.